Yeah, she.
All right. Well, welcome back, everybody. Session four. We were just trying to wish Rachel a happy birthday and celebrating. Jennifer's working out.
Hello, I found my mute button, my, my microphone. Sorry.
There you go. All right, great. Hope you had a, hope you had a great day.
I did. Thank you.
So David's running late because he had a game he was at. He texted.
Life of a principal. Yeah, I just, I just had to leave our baseball game too. Um, but anyway, well, look, uh, I asked Lauren where she wanted to start and she said, well, we go in order here. And I said, all right. But I, but I just wanted to, um, you know, I was just really, uh, enjoying reading the book, uh, the last couple of days. And it really just got me thinking about everything in my own school. And you know what I said, Lauren? It cracked me up. I said, um, I said, you know, I think what I should do is I should give everybody on my team a copy of the book because everything I want for our school is right here. And I was like, oh, that's right. Cause the book is a, it's a literal school improvement plan, uh, in three hundred thirty-five pages. That's right.
It says it's your blueprint for success right there on the top.
It's a blueprint for success. No, you're exactly right. So I, so I started to do that and I gave, I asked my board, what do they want? Do you want a hard copy or a, uh, um, we have, you know, the PDF version as well. And, and, uh, because yeah.
And Kindle.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. So that's why I said they can upload it into their Kindle. Uh, and, and, and so I just think it's like, it's, it's literally everything that I, that, that I, you know, believe in, right? And I, I, I know we talked about, I recently did the activity with our team. What do you care about? Well, I just picked up my book and I said, I care about everything that's in here. Like, if you want to know what I care about, it's here. So everybody, so if you've ever been interested in what Tom Miller cares about in terms of school leadership, it's in this book. It's in this book. And I think these three, uh, indicators in particular, and I was like, as I was reading through, it was like, oh, my gosh, this is so much information to even try to tackle in an hour. Um, so I don't want to have to do that. Uh, so that's why it's always important that you guys are, um, listening or either part of this call. We are listening to the call in an archive and then you're debriefing with your team about where we are uh, in terms of this, uh, process. And then, you know, and you're seeing it, you know, you're seeing it to, to create more and then you're, you know, planning it out and then you're, and then you're selling it to your team and you're selling it to your stakeholders about, hey, here's some shifts that we're going to make. And then you do it and then you're constantly reviewing it. And, and so I think, you know, when Lauren and I were looking at next year, uh, we're like, yeah, you know, you get a, you know, start of the year kickoff and then every quarter, you know, consortium that we host and will be at, uh, Quest Academy in a couple of weeks. But every consortium is kind of like that review and that refresh and that, you know, check in and you could take a look at your wheel of success and see what progress that you've made from the last, uh, quarter. And then your weekly mastermind groups, if you're part of our inner circle are just more like fuel to keep going and accountability. You got your monthly expert sessions that help. And so Lauren and I are planning out next year's expert sessions and they're going to line up to these 10 indicators and then we're going to use, you know, utilize you all as well. Uh, because you guys are doing some of these indicators really, really well and, and have a lot of value to add. So, like, this is not a one and done book. It's not a book at all to be consumed because it's too heavy, uh, to actually consume it. It's, it's continuously reading through, uh, maybe sub indicator by sub indicator and really thinking about, you know, how well are we doing that? What does that look like at our school? Right? And is this for us? Because I'm not saying everything in this book is for you. That would be, that would be, um, pumice. And that's what I told my wife. I said, would it be really, really pompous if I just told my team that they gotta read my book? It's a direct.
Well, Tom, I, I want to quote you, um, from the book on page two O five in your high performance strategy. Cause it was exactly what you were just talking about. Um, it says, I have found that if you can't measure something, you can't understand it. And if you can't understand it, you can't control it. And if you can't control it, you can't improve it. And what you were just saying about tracking your progress through each indicator, um, that's exactly what you were just sharing, you know, and that's the importance of revisiting these indicators. Um, not just a one and done, but constantly so that you are, um, measuring, are you growing? Are you improving?
Yeah. And knowing what improvement looks like. If you were, if you either listened to our archive of the Saturday mentorship call, which was awesome, by the way, we had a handful of people in there for two hours. I was exhausted by the end. I was like, I could have kept going, but I don't know. We ran out of questions, I guess. But we talked a lot about that, getting clear on what success looks like. And then utilizing this book to create the blueprint for whatever that the result is. That's easily what you can do. And as Jennifer put in the chat, we live in a, in a pro, in a constant state, a continuous state of, um, improvement. And it's, that's all you should ever be trying to do. Indeed. So I just, like, when I wrote through, I started to write down, you know, problems that, um, I felt the book was starting to solve, especially from a finance perspective. But I also started to write down some like keys to be understanding, like when it comes to operations, you know, cash is the oxygen that drives everything. If you don't have cash, you can't really do much in a school. And so when you think about, it's like oxygen is, is the fuel, right? If you've ever been at a campfire and you can't get it going, you gotta breathe life into it. And so if you think about most, most school budgets get capped or they get, um, under, underfunded programs are professional development or education supplemental programs or ex, or like, you know, um, or like experiential, you know, programs, right? Like they get capped because we don't have the right plan in place. We don't have cash, but cash fuels that. And I always say is like, gosh, if your school is really struggling with morale, like there's a lot of great morale boosters and some of them cost money and some of them don't. But I mean, there's this constant ways to do it. But when I hear organizations have to eliminate their professional development line item, that's the first thing they cut out of their budget. I just get so worried about their ability to thrive. Cause I'm like, oh, they just, they just take, they just took their oxygen away. Right? And then I wrote down, systems are the highway to your freedom. If you don't have systems in play, uh, you're just doing stuff, right? And then, and then it went, then I talked about a perspective and how everything matters when it comes to your facility. And then on page two hundred and forty, I, I didn't have a thought around it, but I'm like, oh, this is the action after review of questions. There's like five or six of questions. So it's on page two, uh, two forty for me. And then, and then it goes into policies and like, oh, the policies are the box that we all operate in and we build, you know, procedures and systems. And I was like, gosh, like it's just chock full of information. So Lauren said, we gotta start on indicator seven. I said, okay, all right, whatever. That's what, that's what, that's what we can do. So Lauren, you want to pull up it, um, indicator seven? There's like, there's, I think, seven, seven sub, sub indicators here. And I know.
Go ahead. Pull that. I was just gonna say, um, and if you don't mind dropping in the chat, where did you rank your organization, you know, out of seven? You know, were you at a five out of seven, a six out of seven? If you don't mind sharing, uh, you can share with the group in the chat where you, uh, fell on the indicator.
And I started to write into my book, it'd be hard to say, cause I got my virtual background up, but I started to write a date next to the indicator where I was when I measured it. So, uh, I measured our school of five right now, uh, mainly because, um, we had not to this point reviewed all third party agreements, like really kind of thoroughly. It wasn't like part of our process. Uh, and then we weren't monitoring, uh, student attrition. Uh, but I, but since I've been in play, we have, and those were two areas that I thought we could, we could certainly improve on. Um, as a school, I'll also say that, you know, we have a budget yet, but our third party doesn't update the budget per month. So I'm, I'm having to do that on my own Google Doc, uh, but we are moving in the right direction. But, um, my gosh, this is my organization that I'm in charge of. We take some massive risks. I think I've told you all that we, we are, we are basically reliant on a business plan, um, that, you know, raises about an extra three quarters of a million dollars to stay viable per year. It's not something I would ever recommend, but we did ensure, uh, that our annual reserve met a three to five, uh, percent. So I actually uh, budgeted this year to make sure that, you know, we weren't relying upon that raise, that raised fund, which is the first time they've ever done it. They've always done a zero budget. Uh, so I was really, really excited. So would love, yeah. Anybody else in the chat note where they were? Didn't, didn't mark.
No.
Yep. And some of them may, may not even know, you know, I do find like when, when, you know, not all, all school leaders have access to the budget, which was another reason Lauren, I was like, oh, I gotta make sure Drew and Kim, my two principals, like they both have a copy of like, they need to read this because I want them, I want them to have, um, I want them to have control of their own budget for the first time next year. So they'll have to be learning, uh, the process. So not only can this book right, uh, help you as the head of your organization, it'll really help mentor and, um, educate and equip, um, uh, building level principles as well as they really start to understand. Uh, as Lauren, you are part of our, you know, vision retreat with my mentor, Paul, he said, you gotta know your numbers. And, 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 you know, fiscal vitality starts with knowing and understanding your numbers and how your school is funded and how much it needs, right? To be able to be profitable by the end of the year. And that means when you're profitable, it means that you're still alive. Right? The purpose of a business is to solve a problem or provide a service in a profitable way. Charter schools, like all schools, but charter schools in particular, are businesses. And it should be your goal to be profitable, uh, every single year. And even think about every division of your school being profitable. Um, as well as something to be thinking about. So, uh, at our school, our high school, uh, the business plan really drives a lot of the middle school, uh, programming. And we're really working to make sure that we're five through 12 and, and a little bit more, you know, balanced on, 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 on how our money is spent.
Tom, when you're just talking about, um, including your school level principals and the process, that made me think of those five strategies that are shared in the book. And that's strategy number four is budgeting is a team process. And I remember at my school when we, um, finally started making it a team process, I very much was not involved at first. Um, and when you're not involved in the process, I think there's, um, can be a lack of trust. Sometimes you're like, why, why was that decision made? Cause I wasn't involved in the process.
Yep.
But then once you start to involve other team members and stakeholders, it, it just creates that trust.
Yeah. Yeah. And I just put, um, um, there's a, there's a longer handout that you could print for your team, uh, what Lauren was just talking about, those five, uh, strategies. Um, I just put, it's in your book, uh, bonus resources. But yeah, I mean, what a way to start incorporating them into the conversation. I mean, most of the time, school leaders don't know, right? Where the money goes or where it's spent. And that's, you know, something that I learned this year. And, and this, this is really important as a leader. I've, I've really tried to like continue, um, to talk to myself about being curious rather than critical. And, uh, I found that when I was critical, um, I was, you know, causing, uh, just a lack of participation in, in the meetings. And so I want to be curious in terms of like, what experience have you had in a budget or, 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 or what have you done? And what, what we found is like, all the money just got thrown into one giant lump sum here. And nobody really had any understanding of like, do I have any money or not? So we've really tried to, it's going to take us 18 months and we're in month, like 13 of that to get us to where a point where we can be like, oh, like I get $20,000 and here's how I can start to be making sure that I'm making good decisions with my, you know, with my funding. Really, really important stuff here. Uh, this is the number one reason why charter schools end up closing is from fiscal mismanagement. However, it's, it's not necessarily, um, you know, because of finances, it's really because of a lack of execution and the strategies of the plan around the rest of the school. Whether it's your operations or your facilities, uh, uh, there's nothing worse than having, being under enrolled and in a facility that's too big. Right? Because you, you can find innovative ways to use a small space, but it's almost impossible to, to find out how to fund uh, two, you know, 2,000 square feet of unoccupied, you know, uh, building space. And that's what happens, you know, schools over commit, uh, to their budget. Uh, so this is why it's so important that you measure, um, uh, a student attrition, student attrition rate. And I realized, no, no matter where you're, you know, when I read the book, I, or when I reread the book, I go, oh shoot, I wrote this in a North Carolina kind of conversation. But it's just really important that you understand how your s- school, if you're a charter school receives its funds, the timing it receives it funds, what is the actual formula to receive their funds? So like now I, I live in Florida and they do multiple times per year, they do attendance tracks per every class period. And that determines the funding compared to North Carolina, it's the ADM, right? It's the average daily membership of the first 20 days of school. And then it doesn't matter what happens after that. Doesn't matter, you know, you need to know, know your numbers and understand that. And most important, you have to have a system to, um, monitor your attrition rate. Cause if you're losing kids throughout the year and you're losing kids over the summer and you're not paying attention to it, attrition is really, really expensive. And what I mean by attrition during the year is how many kids withdraw from the first day of school to the last day of school versus your total enrollment. And someone will say, oh, they'll argue like, well, I still have the same amount of kids. I'm like, yeah, but if you've replaced 40 kids over the year, that's 40 students that need different services. That's 40 students that your teachers had to re know and re, you know, build a relationship. That's 40 new kids that you had to re-acclimate and reorient and, you know, get used to the, to the school's programming. It's all expensive because time, time is money. Time is money. Um, so you need to have a system to measure that and identify why kids are leaving. And you also need a summer loss attrition too, uh, because you were constantly trying to replace kids over the summertime. It's like a, um, it's like trying to push a rock up a hill. So. And I saw, uh, Jennifer noted in North Carolina, you guys get paid on, based on PMR two now. So that's the principal's monthly report two. Either way, everybody needs to know and understand the formula of how to get funded and they need to have a system that, uh, measures, um, any sort of attrition rate at the school.
Tom, I'll just add, you're talking about student attrition rates in the book. You were, um, mentioned student or family exit surveys. Um, but I know, you know, we've done a lot of stakeholder surveys within the past couple of years. And anytime you send out a stakeholder survey, you can also ask the opposite question. Why do you stay?
Yeah.
It'll give you, you know, still some really great information, um, so that hopefully they don't leave.
Yeah. I actually think that's a more valuable question. It's a more valuable question. And I have to thank Denise Kent. I, I'm 98% sure I, I put her name in the book for this reason. Uh, and she's the one that brought that to my attention. And she talked about, it's under the, it's under the section about, um, trying to be there for everybody or do everything for everybody, something to that effect. Um, and it might be in one of the other, um, indicator chapters, but she, she pointed that out. She's a high performing, uh, principal at the Franklin Academy, which is, um, right outside Wick County, uh, in North Carolina, and they have over 2,000 kids. They're a giant, giant K through 12 charter school. And she said that over those first couple of years, they were just trying to be everything for everyone. They were trying to do this program and that program. And then they just got really tight and just said, nope, we're going to be the best at these three, whatever those three are. And they wanted to make sure that their families chose their school, you know, because of that. And maybe they really chose your school because they were running away from something else, but that, 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 that they met, that they aligned up with that. Cause those were non, non-negotiables. And I think every charter school has to get to that point where you just say, this is who we are. This is what we aim to be amazing at. And we believe we're for everybody, uh, but it doesn't mean everybody has to choose us, right? But we're not going to change our, lose our integrity or change our overall programming for a select few people. But that happens and they go chasing the wind and then they get distracted and that causes more money. Uh, cause then they, you know, uh, fallen away. From their mission. So I, I just, I really thank, you know, Denise for that, um, moment, which was back like in 2010 or 2011 or 12, um, when she had kind of brought that to my, my attention. I also think another really probably underrated section of a chapter or indicator seven is the, um, the third party vendor. Uh, uh, piece here. Uh, I, I, I didn't give them credit, but I should have, uh, when we were with them on, uh, last week, Lauren, but Paul Martinelli built this for me, right? Cause I was having so many third party problems with my marketing and my finances. And I was like, I'm just so tired of getting burnt. And he's like, oh, like, here's five questions that I make sure everybody has. And you want to always be checking references, right? So if you're going to hire a new third party group, you know, who have you worked for in the past, right? Just like a supervisory reference. Cause a lot of you are investing probably, you know, 10 to a hundred thousand dollars maybe in a third, you know, party vendor. Uh, check their bandwidth, right? How big is their staff? Can they actually prove that they can do the work for you, right? Are you always going to be like on call, uh, or on hold? Uh, maybe you want to start with a small project first. Maybe there's something that they could do for you, uh, that just, you know, demonstrates their talent and their, and their level of skill. Um, set clear expectations. Talk about how maybe the last third, uh, party vendor kind of let you down or didn't meet goals and ask them, how would they meet those pieces or how, how are they currently meeting or, 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 you know, how would they fix them if things go awry? And then number five, the short leash, short leash accountability is like time, you gotta make big things out of little things. The first time that they show up late for a meeting or that you're not first on their list, you have to call them out on it. And, and if you don't do that, then you've just lowered the culture. Now it's on you. Um, so those, those things can really cost work, work, um, organizations money. Um, that's, uh, not measuring attrition, not evaluating your third party contracts, right? And making sure you know exactly where every single dollar, uh, goes. But I'd love to hear, uh, from you all in the call. Who, what, what was one part of indicator seven, or maybe it was the, there's a great set of questions with the budget, you know, the budgeting process doesn't start now, right? It really started um, back at the start of the school year. And I know, uh, I, I don't know if Claire is with us, uh, tonight, but I can't wait to hear her, uh, thoughts on this, on this indicator. But um, anybody from a finance, uh, background would love to, to hear what, what was, what was really helpful for you hearing that either in the chat or unmute yourself.
Hey, Tom, it's Claire. I'll just.
Oh, she is here. Hey, Claire.
Not too sense worth. Um, I like, um, just the idea, and you just said it basically, that budgeting doesn't start at the end of the year. And really it should be a year long process. And, um, what we've begun doing is working, um, with a long-term budget as well. So that we're building in those expenses that come around every few years. Um, Jennifer put together a comprehensive list last year or year before last that has the age of all the HVAC systems of our campuses and the roofs. And we know when we need to refresh the different Chromebooks for each grade level and the staff. And so those kinds of, um, expenses are easier to project if we've got like a five or 10 year budget that we're working it into. And then just tweaking it at the beginning of each year. Um, so that's different than the current year budget. Um, but you know, it, just to go back to what you were saying, that it's not, it's not something that we do once a year. It's something that really should be looking at year round.
Yeah, no. And that's, that's a brilliant way. And look, especially since every school now has like, like a plethora of Chromebooks, right? After HSR. And teachers are getting used to them. Well, you gotta build in a cycle because you're going to have to replace those things, right? Or whatever you end up, you know, buying, you know, device by. So having, having a long-term financial plan for your technology and for your furniture and for your HVAC system, like all those things, right? Need, need, need a plan. And on my book, Lauren, so you have to, um, you, you, I think you have a different version, but it's page 194 is I tried to outline the percentage of the overall budget. Uh, and then on page 195 starts that set of, you know, questions to start asking the senior leadership team. But I mean, these are not like exacts, everybody. Um, but it's, it's important. Yeah. And they're also in the, in the, uh, bonus book resources. But you know, it is important and that one, it's in the bonus book resources. I think it's a little bit different than the one in the book, but, um, it's important that you start to really understand every, every percentage over 15 that you spend on your facilities takes away from something else. And it typically takes away from professional development or maybe your personnel line item. Um, and I was recently at a conference, a charter school conference in Georgia where they, where, where, where the funders said, you know, construction costs are really, you know, starting to go up and everything's more expensive. So they're like leaning almost towards the 20%. But if you just think about that, everybody, if you spend 20% towards just your facility, uh, it's, you only have 80% for the rest of everything else. So you need to really be strategic and think about that. Um, and it works at our school, you know, because we, because we raised some additional funds to, to make that percentage work. But I would, I, I would be having a conversations with the facilities committee and your internal team, like, what is the, what is the percentage that we want to hit for all these categories? And what do we value, uh, right? Which is really important. I remember I was a, I was a board member of a charter school that valued, um, uh, field trips and experiential learning. You know how much they budgeted Lauren for, um, experiential learning and field trips?
No.
Zero.
Zero.
Yeah. I mean, the families had to pay for all of it. And, you know, I was every single year for my six years on the, I would, I would, I would question it. Like, how can we do that? Like, if we think that's the most important part of our academic program, then we gotta put some darn money behind it, right? So what do you, what do you value, right? What, what drives the success of your school? So for us at Seaside, it's our staff. And our staff gets paid well. And almost every, you know, you know, you know, column, we're well over the local school system in terms of how we pay our staff. And that's on purpose, uh, cause they're really good. And we hope to get, you know, more and more. So we're, you know, willing to cut off some of these other line items because we don't necessarily need them because our staff is so good. But, but, but that's a really good conversation is taking those, um, I don't know, there's probably 10, 10 or 12 questions about the senior leadership, uh, team. Maybe there's more than that in the book. Um, and then looking at those, uh, percentages and then coming to it, you know, an agreement. And Claire, I'd be, you know, certainly, uh, curious to see how you all do it. Since you have three, uh, facilities and a lot of assets, you know, what do you put in that 15%? My board challenged me a lot this year on that. Well, what should we be incorporating in that 15%? Is that, is that just a facility mortgage cost? Is it operations and facilities? Is it taking care of the facilities? Is it the long-term? It was all these things. And I was like, well, these are all really good questions that I can't answer in a silo, but we need to come to an agreement and then write it down. This is how we're going to start to measure these line items and see how well we're doing. And then historically, look over time. And that's how you become really, really viable. And don't, don't, uh, forget maybe the most important question that any board member or, uh, school leader can ask their finance director, are there any unpaid invoices? What do you guys think of the stories? All these stories are true, by the way. These are all true, true stories that I had to, I had the, this is how I learned. I learned because I was in the fire of, uh, some of these, but yeah. Are there any unpaid invoices? I don't care how good a budget looks on paper. Tell me what, what the reality is. Yep. I love it. So make sure you write down your action step. And we were looking at some skinny strategic plan, uh, possibilities for indicator seven. I really honestly think the best skinny strategic plan, they're both in your bonus resources. One is the internal controls document that we gave you. If you, if you don't have an internal controls document, take that and download it and use it. Um, and, and again, you're, you're, uh, getting curious, not critical. Okay. So make sure everybody knows that they're not under the fire here. Uh, or that, um, I think that downloadable, um, five, you know, five step is a really good, just kind of, hey, let's just take this and just, and let's just start to really work it. Uh, Rachel said two areas for us, third, third party ender, yeah, third party vendor audits. Good. And continue to refine our internal controls. Yeah. Yep. And it's a, it's a, it's a work in progress. I mean, you know, when you find cash, when you find cash laying around in envelopes and stuff, you just, hey, this is lovely. How did this get here? Right? How did this go wrong? When did it go wrong? Okay. What do we need to do differently? And, and if someone says, well, it's what we've always done. Well, that's a, that's a, that's, you know, culture. Say, well, okay, well, it's always done, but is this what we want? Do we really want, you know, teachers to have a couple hundred dollars cash? Well, oh my gosh. And I didn't even, Lauren, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't include, I don't think the best ever cash, uh, story. All right. I'm going to save this one just for you guys. So when I was, I was a middle school director. So when I was, I was a middle school director, I had a teacher who, who. Uh, this is way before Venmo, but they had collected like three thousand dollars in cash. Uh, to do a charter boat trip. And they went to the gas station that was right across street from the school and left the cash in a clear envelope on their front seat. Of course, you know what happened? Somebody grabbed it, right? They came back to the school. To tell me about it, and they were really upset. And I was like, well, did you call the police? And they said, no, I said, we'll go back to the gas station. And call the police. The police arrested them because they thought that they were making a false. Uh, uh. Like a false report because their car wasn't parked where it was the first time, because they went back to the video and saw it. So then I got called like, hey, they're arresting your teacher. You gotta come up here. So what did we learn, right? Why do teachers have three thousand dollars in cash? We didn't have a system for that poor uh teacher to be able to do it. I mean, shame on them from leaving three, three thousand dollars on their front seat of their car in a. In a not so, in a not so affluent rural area. But I mean, that's, and, and that's not even, I don't even know how I didn't remember that one. We'll have to put that in the second book. But yeah, there, there's just things. And so I guarantee, I guarantee you right now in your school. Somebody has access to cash or cash is laying around where it shouldn't be. And, and you've got to find it. You gotta root it out and build a system around it. And, and it, it, it can't happen.
Hey, can I tell a quick story?
Of course, yeah. Hey, Jennifer.
Alright, so early in my career when I was a teacher, so just remember I had a banking background before going into teaching. We had this, uh, I was a team teacher with an ELA teacher. Uh, she did. Um. Reading and history. I taught math and science, and we were planning this trip to Charleston, and we had one teacher assistant. And um, so one morning, you know, they're like, it's time to collect money and the kids are bringing me money. I said, oh, no, no. I don't collect money. This is, you know, the other teacher's trip. Go talk to her and the teacher assistant. So I knew to keep myself out of that. And uh then we went to the, went to Charleston, had a wonderful time. And during the summer, I got a call from the school director, Mr. Madden at the time, and he's like, Jennifer. I'm getting um a phone call from the touring company saying they never got paid. And I said, well, that wasn't my trip. I wasn't in charge. I didn't collect money. Go talk to the other teacher. So what ended up happening was the teacher, we found out the teacher assistant. Stole the money. She actually was telling this elaborate lie, and she told it over and over and over again, and it never made sense. But I think she convinced herself, you know, that it was true. If she just kept telling the same story. We would believe her, but she said she went and got money orders. And that all the paperwork was stolen from her. Room during the summer. I, I can tell nothing made any sense. And I remember Mr. Madden coming to me and. And telling me about it. And I said, well, she stole the money. I mean, if she can't prove. That she collected it. And I said, look, I mean, this is when the school was young. I said, we don't have. The proper accounting. In place. Her teachers collecting money. I said, this is crazy. I said, I had no idea y'all weren't keeping up with it, or somebody in the office wasn't keeping up with it. And I said, I'm never collecting money. Y'all need to put a process in place to make sure, you know, everything's done properly. And I'm like, I'm out.
And that's the purpose of a policy is to take, is to take the human element out of it. And, and uh you need those uh processes in place and fraud happens. Unfortunately, pretty much in every institution, government. Private, corporate, it doesn't matter. Someone's going to get their hands on cash that shouldn't. And when someone's not watching. Um, someone's gonna take advantage of those. So, yeah, I mean, you just never know. And I mean, gosh. Uh, I know the, you know, the one charter school, I think I talked about it, you know, with the, with the board chair asking me, how would we know that this would happen? I mean, I can't even, I can't even begin to explain. The relationship I had with the people that stole all that money, uh, you know, from, or defrauded the uh government and, and they were, you know. Thirty to forty year veterans. They weren't young whippersnappers, like these were older. Uh, veteran educators who, who totally made up kids' names. And put them into power school and got paid year after year for these kids, so they could grow the school and. Build a new building. And I'm sure everybody, you know, had uh good intentions at the beginning, right? Maybe it started with just three kids here. Four kids there, but it doesn't matter. You gotta have internal controls and multiple people have to have. Uh, access to, to your, to your Venmos and your Stripe accounts. And everything needs to be reconciled. And I'm, I'm sure it's a real pain in the tail. Uh, nowadays with so many ways to be able to collect cash. Um, but. It's gonna happen. So you gotta have those systems in, in place for it. So. As I, as I said in indicator eight, uh, by the time the emergency occurs, it's, it's too late to prepare and practice. You gotta do all that on the front end, so you're not repairing on the back end and dealing with teacher assistants that are stealing money and. Uh, you know, teachers that we ended up, I mean, she actually, you know, I paid the money back. We just took it out of her paycheck the next, you know, couple of months. Not sure if that was the right thing to do, but that's what we did. Um, but anyway. She didn't work there the next year. She was probably upset about it. Probably upset. Let's, let's roll on. So uh, you got your action step for, for um, um, indicator seven? And, and so I, I, I just want to spend maybe three minutes on, on, on what I think is the most important. Uh, part of indicator eight. And it's not just necessarily having a facility that works. That's a critical part, and. I believe, you know, personally, that's why if a charter school closes, it closes because of the over commitment of the actual uh facility. But the four corners, four walls exercise. I just love this. If you never watched Marcus Lemonis on um. He had a TV show called The Prophet. That's where I learned it from. And also, uh, Paul Mar- Martinelli pointed out to Lauren and I the other day that Ray, that Ray Kroc did this. So if you've seen the, the movie The Founder. Uh, right about every day, walking the campus, walking the four corners of the campus. And in between the four walls of every classroom, and you're gonna see things. You've got to change your perspective. You have to visit your school at least once a week. I, I do it every day. But at least once a week from a, from a, from a guest perspective. Call your school, get in car line, like just. Walk around with students and just be part of the class. I mean, there's so many things you're going to learn when you change your perspective, right? When you, when you change the way you look at things, the things that you look at change. And it's, it's just critically important for you to have that eye. And, and this is what I'm looking for. Right? Um, you're always looking for trash, you're always looking for safety, you're always looking for just something that just looks, you know, out of whack. I cannot stand schools that, you know, print. Signs and tape them to the wall. It drives me nuts when they rip and they tear, and it just looks sloppy. And you're, you're multi million dollar enterprises. So, you know, figure it out. And one great example, you can't. See unless I uh turn it off, um, is, is that, you know, we bought these great seaside wave posters. Um, for our school and, and, you know, we spent, I mean, they cost us a, 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 a ton of money. It was crazy. Um, I'm not sure why, uh, but here it is. You can see it right here over my shoulder. And so we had taped these um to every, to every single classroom uh wall. And I was walking around, I'm like, oh, these look horrible. Like, like, what are we doing? And then so I said, listen, go, you know, go buy frames for these things, because they're already getting torn, they're already getting loose and it, right? So that was just a bad decision from the front end. But you just, you know, start really thinking about your work, your organization, like the multi million dollar enterprise that it is, and treat it that way. Uh, and really retreat it that way. And someone's got to be paying attention, and you gotta be walking through the building with other people and tell them exactly. What you love. And what you don't. Right? Let them know what you care about and what your expectations are. I think Kate Allison. Dunaway, you know, some of you may uh know her. She was a member of the inner circle for years, but she was so, I mean, hurt, it was funny watching her uh staff around her, because gosh, if there was anything. That was crooked or on the wall, they would like sprint over to it when they knew she was coming. Uh, because she would, she would hold, hold them accountable, and they uh knew better, right? And so um, it's not that she was mean about, so she's just had very high uh standards for what things should look like. So I just honestly think. That four corners, four walls, and the story that I tell around that is so important, like really having an understanding of how people feel when they walk in your building. How, when they call your school, when they email your school, any sort of communication piece is critically important. So. Uh, Lauren, what are some of your thoughts around this, this indicator about the four corners, four walls?
Yeah, I was actually gonna throw a question out to the group, just out of curiosity, you know, you talked about um. You know, walking through with someone and saying out loud what your expectations are. But in the book, you also talk about having a written checklist of what those expect. Expectations are, so that your staff members know. Um, I'm just curious, do any of the school leaders that are here tonight have a tool and would be willing to share with the group? A resource of what your expectations are when you're walking through?
Now, you've, you've done a great job, Lauren. You built us that, you know, uh, compliance and risk management checklist. I think that's, that's a, you know, starting point. If you really wanted to go big, like.
Yeah.
One, um, and that also should be in your uh bonus resources.
Yeah.
That's a great tool, but yeah, what are those little things, right? Every single day that you're looking for?
Well, I think it can also beyond um that, you know, what are you expecting of your students when you're walking through the school? You know, are they on a certain side of the hallway or? Those transition times?
Yep.
Um.
Well, that sanitation score, right? You walk into a restaurant, you see that sanitation score.
Mm hmm.
What's your bottom line, everybody? Is it ninety? Is it nine, five, right? Is it eighties for some, you know, I, I don't know, but you, but only you can make that happen. And, and I was really surprised. I never, that, that one school that I talk about, it didn't seem dirty. When the kids were there, it seemed filthy when the place was empty. And I was shocked. I was like, wow. It really is dirty in this place, and shame on us for not seeing that. Shame on us. Yep.
Spot.
Ooh.
Bentley.
We're gonna go ahead and mute yourself, uh, whoever, uh, or, you know, Lauren, we can get them whoever it is. Um, yeah, so such a, so such a uh critical part in, in really looking at your. Uh, you know, buildings um, uh, with that. Uh, anything else from, is this, is this a chapter where I say to use soap? Or is that the next one? I think that's the next uh chapter, but it's just so, so like and for when you really think about it. Um, looking at the cleanliness of the bathroom is a great indicator, uh, whether or not you are taking proper care. Um, having safety plans. Um, we just at our school for the first time in years pulled the actual. You know, fire alarm, right? Uh, that, that happens all the time in the schools that we would go in on like a temporary interim basis. Nobody would know how to turn off the fire alarm, so they would just do like a fake fire alarm. Over like a walkie talkie. And I'm like, well, how do you know? Like, what if there's really a fire? Like, how do you know if it works? Right? So like, as much as you can, and we learned that at um endeavor when we were just there, like make. Make the emergency as real as possible, uh, so uh people can practice under those types of uh conditions. Uh, because nothing's easy when, when you're in a crisis and emergency. Um, and I think, I don't know what the, the quote was that that guy told uh Christie Whitesides. I don't think she's on with this uh tonight. But um, but he had said to her, right? He's like, he's like, he's like, an emergency would never look like this. Nobody acts this way in a crisis, right? Cause a crisis.
Yeah, it was something.
It reveals them, yeah.
Yeah, it was something about um. You know, the, the drills that we do, typically we are running through them quickly, but a real crisis. Doesn't happen that fast. It's very. Time consuming and so practicing like it's the real thing.
Yeah, and, and this is a great place to, to um invest. We uh, we talked about this a little bit last week. When things are important, they show up in two places, your datebook and your checkbook. And like you, when it comes to emergency, uh, um, uh, you know, systems, when it comes to security. Like you can't cheap out. And uh, somebody just did a safety audit on our school and someone kind of questioned the price. And I'm like. What's, you know, what's the cost of, of, uh, you know, death on campus? Right? Like, I can't, I won't be able to recover from that. I got, I'll pay whatever it takes. If someone's gonna say, oh, you have a major safety issue here, right? Or this is one way that someone could get into your building. Um, whatever those things are, so just be, be really, you know, again, back to Claire's point. Make sure that you have, you know, short and long term goals around how you're using your funding, especially around your facility. Uh, long term planning for your, things like your HVAC unit, windows, doors, uh. You know, our school's on the, on the Gulf of Mexico, so it's, it's just deteriorating in front of us all the time. Our uh toilets that were put in were like house, you know, toilets, not like, not like, you know, ones that were built to be flushed eight million times a day by middle school. Like all those little things come back to get you, right? So don't be cheap. Uh, cause you'll be, cause you'll be paying on the back end um for sure. And make sure that whoever. Is overseeing your emergency plans, right, is on a disc profile, like a very, very heavy C oriented person. They may not be the best to communicate the plans. They may need to help them, but gosh, don't be the best in making sure that you're, you know, checking off all the Ts and. You know, what's it? Dot in the I's and cross in the T's or, you know, crossing the I's, dot the T's, I don't know. But you want someone who's really into that, and it's really important. The two best individuals I ever met were uh Brandon uh Marshall um and Doug at East Wake Academy and um. Brandon was at Research Triangle. They were two emergency service like experts. And at a school, and oh my gosh, did it make a difference when you had individuals on your campus that were like super trained in crises? Uh, cause they saw everything. So you definitely want, wanna be looking at, maybe send someone you have full time. But it's someone you bring on your campus a couple of times a year to really make sure that your campus is tight, because it'll make your people feel better. Um, you know, and your parents feel better, because the number one reason parents choose charter schools is because it's, it's safety and smallness. So the more that you can communicate, you know, the effort to be better and safe, um, the better you'll be, for sure. So be sure you take the time to uh mark down your action step, put your action step in the chat. What's, what's maybe one thing out of here? Uh, I scored us a three out of four as well. And where we were lacking was, was the facility inspection checklist. We didn't necessarily have something. Um, really good. At least it's not something that's communicated well enough. But I did hire someone uh this year to start to take that over, so I'm gonna check in with him. Has he started to make his checklist yet? And uh, how, how well have we oriented him maybe probably into our um emergency uh protocols and uh plans? Cause I want him to, to have a big ownership of that, since he walks the campus so much. How about anybody else? Anybody else have a, an action step?
I do. I'm actually our safety director and um. I just realized we've not had a fire drill for March. So, oh, I'm talking about things that are on my calendar. I have on my calendar that we need to run a fire drill. But I think big picture for us getting into this new building, we um have a. New safety committee that we've just put together specifically for the new building to um make sure that we are hitting all of our. Major components for safety as far as communicating with parents, what to, what not to, how to put the plans together. And we have a meeting coming up in April and. Um, so my big action plan is to get our new SRO. Fully in the system so he can see everything and can be part of our patient in April.
Yeah. I love it. And I'd hi- I highly recommend everybody do one of two things, either walk your car line or participate in your car line in the next week. Call your school from the outside. I guarantee you're gonna learn something. You'll be like, wow, I had no idea. And start really looking at what your signs say. Are they inviting? Are they, do they line up to your culture? Or are they mean? Like. No offense to anybody who uh does this, but I've been in a couple of schools where. There's just very nasty sarcastic memes about taking your attendance. And I hate them. I throw them out when I see them. Someone spent a lot of time probably doing it. It drives me crazy. Lauren, I was looking at my wheel. It's much, it's hard to see because it's blurring in my background, but. My, my wheel is a little bumpy, little bumpy. I don't know how everybody else is doing, uh, but uh, but mine is, mine is lumpy and um. Lauren and I, we have some great ideas. We can't wait. We're gonna. Lauren and I, we have some great ideas, we can't wait, we're gonna get some, some wheels made. And uh, and start, you know, showing how, how an un, an unbalanced wheel rolls down the hill, so. All right, Lauren, take us home. Let's, let's, let's hit on to indicator nine here. And spend a couple of minutes there. And just make sure, hey guys, everybody, like when you sit down with your team uh this week. Do your apply, change and teach, right? What's, what's, what's one thing we're gonna work to get better? What's one change we'll make? And then what's thing, what's one thing we have to teach our staff, right? Or teach our team or teach our SRO? As uh Rachel just shared uh with us. All right, so capacity and uh compliance. Everybody's dream, really, really sexy category. You know, it's always really funny, when I think about these three um indicators, seven, eight, nine, they're really tangible, right? So I think that's why probably like a lot of schools do pretty well on these three uh categories. And their self-rating, I would be really, I would challenge every school to take the indicators sub-standards. Or sub, sub-indicators and have your whole staff rate them. Cause I wonder how clean they would think your place is, right? Or how well the, the like emergency plans are communicated there. Lauren, remember last year, two years ago, we were, we were with a school and, and it's like, the staff had never seen the emergency plans. And they had never been updated, emergency plans, and all they ever talked about was the emergency plans. It's like, why is it so long to get the emergency plans out? And they were never written. And it's just so important to really ask your staff, like, hey, how do you guys feel about these? And see if it lines up to your scores um as well. Because, as I underlined, what appears to be disorganization or confusion to the outsider is the result of the systems. And the overall culture of the school, uh right there on the first page of indicator nine. Such as such an important part that like your school is going to run based upon the systems that. You're able to build or someone on your team is building, or your lack of systems. Lauren, something you wanna highlight here from indicator nine? You uh popped up the, the sheet here, wasn't there, just one, one in particular?
Gosh, they're so, they're all so important. Um, one thing that, when I was looking through the, the book. That I was, it was on page two fifty-one, um. It was talking about common miss mistakes, the common mistakes about board members and there, it's all about policies and. Um, basically just giving some best practices for when writing policies. But I liked the story that you wrote about, about how you get all these calls. And the first question you always ask though is, well, what does your policy say?
Your policies.
And so, so often I have now started to um ask that question, cause I've heard you say it so many times. It's, it's a great starting point. Um, they're there for a reason. And I think we in crisis mode or we're just putting out fire mode, we can often forget. You know, what, what our policies say, and usually the answers are right there for us.
Yep.
Um, and it's just such an important reminder to um look back to those procedures and policies that you have in place. To, to make sure that you're following them.
And what's so important is don't change your policy, you know, in the middle of the crisis.
Right.
That's, that will get you sued. Uh, no matter how bad your policy stinks and it's not what you wanted to read or see, you gotta follow it. Until you follow a process to remove it or to change it, but you can't do that while you're handling, you know, the issue. You just need to suck it up. Um, and uh do it. And, and you're so right, like, I mean, e- every, every school leadership team. Should have easy access to, to um local policies, right? Your own current uh school policies. But also the state, you know, policies that you have to adhere to or the federal policies. Like I just think about, you know, the Safe uh Schools Act and, and we've got a few of them listed here. And then you've got your local things like OSHA, Blood Board Pathogens and Office of Civil Rights. And you should have an HR uh uh, you know, expert around you or some sort of state. Um, you know, local employment law, like all these things should be within your fingertips uh at any moment as a leader. Because, because you, you can't predict when the emergency is gonna come. And you know, people are gonna look to you uh for answers. And a lot of the charter schools, I know the one that I'm in right now, we've got like ten, ten versions of the handbook. I was like, which, which one are we going to? Can we update this one and put the rest in a trash or like in a different file so we don't touch them anymore? And I know I'm not the only person, cause there's a couple of you uh chuckling right now, how many drop boxes in Google Drives exist? But it's so important to have a common place for all these really critical documents. And they all need annual review to make sure that they're still lining up. Uh, because they will, they will get you in trouble uh for sure. And you're right, Lauren, in this, in this, in this non-sexy category here of operations. I think the, the nine steps to create a policy right around there. And I, and I wanted to give kudos to Piedmont, who I know is on here, Piedmont Community Charter. You know, there's probably one step we're uh missing here in the uh policy development. Is, is to make sure that the, that the, that the team can write a procedure off of the policy. And I don't know if I uh spelled that out, and if I do, in a, in another version, we're gonna make sure we give a Piedmont credit. Cause they have such a great way of doing that, you know, you, you know, the policy gets drafted by the committee. It comes back to the management team, can the management team write a procedure off of it? And, and if they can't, then it goes back to the, to the committee to rewrite the policy. And uh, you know, policies should be broad for a reason, so that you can actually function under them. And, and gosh, do we not hear, well, it's a policy, it's a policy. I mean, people, most people don't even know what a policy is, but they just use that word because they're trying to get someone to adhere to, you know, what they want, right? So, you know, I always laugh, it's like, well, it's not a policy and, you know, no one would ever say that. Uh, those are your bylaws, those are different, you know, bylaws are the structure of your governance. Um, you know, they're not, they're not, they're not a policy, they're, you know, something different. So it's, they're really important. If you haven't started your uh policy review as a charter school, at this point of the year, it's March, you gotta start it soon. Cause it's gonna take you time to rewrite or make any adjustments to get it ready for your, so your staff can have your handbook uh ready, ready to go by the start of the school year.
Hey, you, you got a minute for me?
Of course, yeah, go for it.
Alright, got a couple of things to say. So when it comes to, I've been through an Office of Civil Rights complaint and I've been through an EC complaint. So when you're looking at um, you know, dis- disciplinary issues. You, I tell my directors, you know, we're, we're not only, you know, getting through this particular issue. But we're also documenting to the point that we could have a complaint of any kind. A EC complaint and Office of Civil Rights complaint. So if you do your investigation thoroughly. And work with your attorney to make sure everybody's getting their due process rights. Um, you're also setting yourself up for a good outcome with an Office of Civil Rights complaint. Or an EC complaint. So the very first question I ask, if there's a disciplinary action, is do they have a five oh four? Or do they have an IEP?
Yep.
So I've been through these a couple of times. Um, we've come out very well on the other side. Because we did our due diligence and made sure everybody, everybody's rights were protected. So that, that's my best advice. Just be very careful when you're in the moment. Do everything right then, and then when the complaint happens, you're gonna be fine.
Yeah, and never waste a good crisis, everybody. It's even better when you can learn from the crises of other people. That's why I wrote the book this way, right? So you can learn from all the dumb things that I did. But like to uh Jennifer's point, like, let's just say something did happen. That after-action review process that's on page two hundred forty of my book. Um, but you know, I just say, the most important step a leader can take after they put out the fire is when it's still smoldering. Bring everybody together and ask them, what went wrong? When did it go wrong? How did we miss it? How will, how will we fix it? Who's in charge of fixing it? And when will we come back together to learn this new system? Every single time that there is a, you know, from a mini crisis to a big one, you wanna have some form of after-action review. To rebuild and reboot um that system. Uh, and sometimes that turns into rewriting a policy or just writing a policy for the first time. Because most, that's when most policies are written, after, after, after the emergency occurred. Cause then you realize, man, we really need a policy around that for next time. Love it. Yeah, super, super important. So again, another area where you want someone on your team that's, that's good and that's um. A detail-oriented, you don't want your policies to be so rigid that you can't function. You do want them broad um and, and not super s- uh specific. But you know, clear enough where it's, 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 it's easy for any team to interpret. Um, we're, we're going through a situation with our admissions policy right now, that's kind of long and convoluted. And I've got one interpretation of it, and shockingly, other parents have different interpretations of it. So we'll see who wins. Um, hopefully it won't go to a court of law, but those things happen. So right, so a constant review is super important. Um, and having those after-action reviews. You know, and I think Lauren, probably something that's missing the most here is these training manuals and programs for all s- uh standard operating. Uh, procedures, that's probably one of our lowest rated scores as well, I would guess. It's just making sure that, that every year, like you are, you are making sure that every employee has been properly trained. And equipped and confident um in all these systems as well. And if you don't have the um internal and external auditing uh calendar, I think we gave you a couple of, of examples. You've got our internal controls for finances, Lauren built you out the uh risk management and uh compliance. Um, uh checklist, uh which should be, it should be in that, um, let's see if it's in there, in that effective. It's in there, yep, it's in indicator nine, um, you can get that. And, and then you could download the policy development process as well, so you can have it and it's outside of your book and just another way uh to do that. So, I'm trying to think, um, there was one more thing that I underlined here in terms of the, of the uh. I really like the nine-step systems that I wrote. So this is just another way, if you don't have systems in play, and, and I just said, look, challenge, challenge the non-instructional people on your team. To just write out, you know, one or two systems a week, you know, just to pay attention to what they do. Because, you know, if, if you're the only person who knows how to do it and you leave the school, oh my gosh. You know, all that intellectual information is going out the window. And it, someone made me think of it earlier, right? I mean, who on your staff like knows what to do? You know, you know, Claire Wilson at uh Piedmont, she's such a valuable uh, uh person and you know, resource, right? But you know, a, a big part of her work is building systems and teaching the next, next uh person. And you wanna be bringing people along with you to see the crisis, right? And to work through the crisis, because the more that you build capacity in the people around you, the more they'll be able to handle uh the challenge. I think it was Rachel said something, or it was the SRO or something, I was like, oh, make sure you bring somebody with you, right? Every single time you're dealing with something, you wanna bring someone with you, so that now you have another person who knows how to turn off the fire alarm. Or you have another person who knows, you know, how to, how to just do something in the school. Um, and it's not just relying upon you. Cause on page two forty-five, uh I wrote this Maxwell quote. Uh, as a leader, you could do anything, but you cannot do everything, right? Um, and you're responsible for it all, but you have to be able to trust the people around you uh to make sure that they can. Uh, they uh, you know, can address it. And if they do it wrong, it's okay. Now you have something to uh teach them for the next time. All right, Lauren, anything else? What else we wanna address? Write down your action steps, everybody. I got a couple. I know one uh for me is I wanna make sure that I download this um. There's a, there's on page two fifty-two, there is a, there is a uh self-assessment. Um, for your policies, right? And Lauren, we could, we could see if we could download this maybe and drop it in, in the bonus resources, so then they could give it to their um staff. But, you know, do you have a single policy manual that houses all organizational policies? I'm sorry, you don't. Is there a formal process for writing and adopting policies? I'm sorry, you don't have that either, uh right? Is there a consistent format, right? Doesn't have to be uh consistent, but you certainly would like it to be consistent. Like you look at school system policies and they've got, you know, all the numbers and all the things, you know, happening, like you just wanna, you just wanna like a nice, easy place that you can go to. Uh, and know, and know the answer. Um, and is there, you know, training room? So I think that's, that's, that's gonna be my action step. I'm gonna take that, I'm gonna take that self-assessment with our team here and see how well uh we do on that one.
Tom, who comes to mind when you're just reading all those, um, I feel like an expert in this area is Brevard Academy.
Yeah, yep.
I've seen several of Ted's, they're all in a very consistent format.
Yep.
Um, and clearly labeled and, yeah.
Yeah. And we didn't spend a lot of time um about marketing and, you know, branding. And that's another area that I think uh Brevard Academy is really starting to shine. And they've taken our fully enrolled workbook. So if you're in our inner circle, I sent that uh today. But they've, you know, taken this piece, but there's a whole section about uh branding there, plus on page two sixty-one of your book. And I don't think I wrote this in the book, but if you think about branding and marketing are two, two, two different things. Branding is a reputation and marketing is a, is a, is a relationship. And your school has both of those pieces, but you have to put some steps and some strategies around each of them, right? Is it clear, is our, you know, branding clear? Is it consistent? Uh, does everybody know it and understand the right, if they see our, you know, logo, who, oh, we are? We've got like five different logos at our school, so we're really trying to like streamline everything back down. We just trademarked it. And so like, this is, this is the one we wanna use. So we now, now we've gotta communicate it out to the, to our staff. Hey, if you have a letterhead, use this, right? Those are, those are important pieces, so you see the consistency. And then, and then the relationships that you build through your marketing plan. Um, so on page two sixty-one, two uh sixty-two, there's, there's, there's some really good, easy, easy-to-do-yourself uh steps. Where you don't have to hire a marketing company to do it, but I do think as your charter school gets older. Or I'll say more mature, that having somebody in charge of your communications and marketing will do nothing. But increase your enrollment and strengthen your school. Uh, so you, you want someone who's basically free, right? Someone who's gonna bring in enough students um that pays for itself over time.
And just on that note, um, you know, talking about your, your branding and your marketing, the next page is your rituals and stories. Which really ties into another area that we haven't talked about is your master's schedule. And so when you're thinking about your master's schedule, think about those rituals and ceremonies and make sure that you're including those. And it's built into the day. Um, I know that's something that a lot of schools are, are working on right now for the next school year. Holly today in our, in our circle shared that I know Piedmont's working on their master's schedule. Um, so just lots of really great information in this chapter that you can reflect on with your team. Um, when you're going back through it to.
Yeah.
Again, just have that alignment across all areas.
Yep, agreed. There's a lot, there is a lot in this, in these uh three uh sections for sure. Um, and just a lot of good tangible stuff that's, that you can pull out and put some, someone in charge, right? So empower them, you know, delegate it to them, get them a copy of the book so they know and they understand it. And just continuously have these uh conversations is, is really important. A lot of internal control stuff um as well. But it's all critically important, operations, capacity, your uh capacity is your, is your student base. It drives, i- it, it's the oxygen that will drive everything. So just constantly thinking about how, how am I ensuring my operations? And my facility are creating revenue, creating revenue. Uh, we didn't even talk about a car line in here, right? But I heard Ted Duncan from Brevard Academy say. He's like, you know, one of the number one ways that you're, that, there's two key ways that your school is seeing in the public. One is sports and two is your car line. And I was like, oh, it's a really great way to even think about it. And because everybody can say nice things about your car line or how you screw up everybody's, you know, uh traffic and, and twice a day. And I think he said, did, didn't they get a ten thousand dollar donation from a member of the community? Um, and, and they didn't have any students there, they just said, I just really appreciate the time that you take to make sure that, that, you know, we're not all interrupted. Because of your five hundred cars. And here's, here's a ten grand, so totally, totally worth it with that, so. All right, write down your action step for indicator nine. Uh, you know, you may need a couple of meetings with this. But you've got individuals on your team that you should be sitting down and talking about operations, facilities and the finances. And, and you may almost just need like. And, and you may almost just need like an operations team, which is separate from your academic team. Now, occasionally they will come back as one, uh, and maybe you're not large enough in that where you have them all. But really be thinking about if I did have an operations team, what would that, you know, meeting be like versus an academic team? Uh, and really start to separate, um, everybody's roles and responsibilities. We're all, you're all one. But it would be great to have a set of individuals really focused on finance, operations and facilities. And then another group of adults who are really focused on academics and instructional learning. Love it. All right. Next week, we are going to finish up. So we're gonna do indicator six and ten. So that's, uh, parent engagement and board governance, right? Effective governance. Um, so I'm really excited to hear your feedback on this call, uh, from this session and your scores. Uh, action step for me on, on, uh, indicator number nine, Lauren, is going to be, um, the internal and external auditing counter exists for all, uh, compliances. Since I'm new to Florida, I don't really know them all. And right now I'm just leading by default. I'm just waiting for someone to say, you didn't turn this in. Uh, but I'm not as good as reading. We do have those like, uh, cause I do think that the, that the, there's one thing that the Office of Charter Schools does really well in North Carolina is that they do have like a, a massive newsletter that puts a lot of stuff out. We have in Florida too, but I haven't gotten into a routine of reading it the way I should be. Um, our two school, uh, principals are really good at that. This is where they shine. I have to give them, uh, credit and they've been here for some time. Uh, but I think that would be one great thing that we could, we could take a look at. Does anybody else have an action step? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Rachel. Yep.
And I, I, for chapter nine, my action step, we are actually working currently with our academic committee to, um, we have some procedures in place regarding grading, but a lot of, um, concerns have gone to our board and our board doesn't have a policy. So it's just been whatever the teachers individually have been doing. And ours was very minimum. And so, um, our academic committee for the board has requested like, what are we doing now? Because they feel that this is an area where policy needs to be written. So that'll be my first um, going, process going through that with this board. And, and so I don't know that's really a full action step like by a certain date, but that's something that we're working through right now is just the process of that first, first policy with this board as a team. Um, and so they have an academic committee next month. So my action separately is to, to be looking for them and preparing, cause they, they, a lot of guidance still comes from us on just making sure that, that procedures can be put in place with whatever, thinking through a questioning and asking questions of me for, so.
Yeah. And you got that great nine-step process where you could kind of use as a template. And I would highly recommend you go, let's ask the inner circle, who's got examples? Cause I'm not, if I'm going into that conversation with a blank sheet of paper, right? And I wanna be thinking about, right, you know, I always feel that the policy is there to create consistency, okay, one, but also the culture I desire. You know, so the policy could be as broad as a ten-point scale. It could be as rigid as someone turning it into like a procedure that'll have one test, one project and one's, right? So you don't, that's what you don't want. You have broad and consistent and aligns to your school's values and, and, you know, goals. So. Um, yep, that's good though. But it is, but it's important. They should know. And remember their job is, is the how well question. So just really, really thinking about it. I mean, maybe, you know, maybe that's what, maybe it's what the grading policy is. We'd have to see some examples, but I, I look forward to that one. That'll be, Rachel, with it. I love the how you just lean into the tough stuff, right? You're not, you know, making something easy. All right, everybody. Okay. Well, have a magnificent week. Looking forward to seeing you. If you're in the, the inner circle, everybody, um, if you celebrate, have an amazing Easter, uh, weekend with, with, uh, family. And, uh, take, take care of yourself, um, and, and each other. Bye-bye.